Call the meeting in order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the great majority of justice for all.
Well, the clerk please call roll.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle is absent this afternoon.
Okay, we have the consent calendar for tonight, today. The agenda, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, July 24th, 2014, and August 20th, 2015. We have public utilities easement, Berry Street and Highway 20, an ADA curb ramp, right-of-way dedication, Post Street, Lynn County property, right-of-way deed dedications easement agreement, Walt Badger, the Airport Road Extension Project. Move for approval?
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar for today. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Consent calendar is approved. At this time, we have a time for public comments. If there's anyone from the community that would like to speak to counsel. Okay. Don't see any. Seeing none, we'll move on to the regular session. Number one, City of Albany Draft Agreements, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at the agreements that were in the council packet. I guess what's changed since the last time that we met and discussed them is pretty much just some legal language. The dollar amounts, timing and whatnot has stayed the same. When was it, Trey? It's been close to a month ago, probably two, three weeks ago. Myself, Trey, Rob, and Laura Schroeder met with City Albany Public Works and their city attorney, had a really good meeting with them, worked through all the details, concessions were made on both sides, and we ended basically on what we're calling a final draft agreement. The question that we're kind of here to ask today, and any other questions you may have about it, is if council is in consensus with it, we'll move on to drafting the exhibits. The exhibits are basically, as indicated in the agreements, we've got what our crossings are as an exhibit, what Albany's crossings are as an exhibit, and there's no contention with the exhibits, it's just a matter of putting the stuff in there, but it's going to take a little bit of time to put that together. So that's kind of where we're at. I can answer any questions that you have, but in terms of changes, there's really been no significant changes since we met. I would have to say that Albany, on our last negotiation, gave a lot on that. It was actually a really good meeting, both sides did, but we got to a point where we all feel pretty comfortable with what we have. Not perfect by any means, but we're close. And then they're meeting also with their council today as well, so to go over the agreement and get the same feel on the consensus and moving forward. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have? Other than that, I would just look for consensus.
Comment. I just want to thank you, Rob and the staff, Gary, for all the work you've done this past few years. I know it's been a really hard road. Things started off really contentious, and you guys did a fantastic job, and I appreciate the work that you did. And also thank Albany for coming to the table and working with us and being able to work this out, because, you know, we are neighbors, and it's something that we need to keep up our relationship with Albany.
Absolutely.
And with that canal being, you know, split between us, where we're sharing it essentially, it's going through our town, it's important, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for all your work, and this looks really good.
Well, thank you. It kind of gave us an opportunity to see the point of view from each other's sides when we really took the time to do it, and we actually have a really good working relationship with their public works staff and their city attorney. It's actually worked out really well, so.
Good.
Hopefully, we can put this to bed and move on and collaborate on other stuff.
I think that the high point, there's two agreements here. The high point for us as a city is the agreement, which is essentially a transitional agreement for our water delivery.
Right.
That when we get to the end of the construction of our plant, we are going to be independent in our ability to draw water for our community. That's a first, at least since 1947 or 1946.
Somewhere in there.
When the current plant was first put online, and we've been drawing water from the canal since. Maybe we did before that, but to be able to, as a community, have independence from any other outside party on how we draw our waters, I think, very important, and this agreement bridges us to that ultimate success. So I think we'd be negligent if we didn't mention that in this discussion now.
Anything else?
Been a long road, but I'm really pleased that we've come to that point where we have had and still have a cordial relationship with Albany, and again, I want to thank you, Ron, and staff, Gary, for getting us to this point, and I'm totally supportive of the draft.
Well, it hasn't come without the loss of a little bit of hair, but we did get that.
I think it's appropriate to commend the staff and all the principals for this negotiation. We stayed out of court. We did not engage in the bantering with the media to try to accentuate a position. I think we took the high road in all respects, and the reason has prevailed, and good government has shown forth here, and we should be happy, and the citizens have been the beneficiary ultimately for this, because we've been able to manage the cost and enter into a potential agreement here for the long-term solution, which has eliminated a thorny problem which this community has had for decades.
Well, with that, we'll put the drafts together, or the exhibits to it, and I would, I'll need to talk to their staff and see, you know, timing-wise, but we'll get this put in place. Really, the impact starts next fiscal year or so, sometime between now and July 1, we'll get final documents for council signature and whatnot, and we'll bring that back to you and go from there.
Yeah, it looks like we're on the right track, finally.
Yeah, I think so.
And thank you also to Trey, who I forgot to mention, and I apologize for that, because I know he had some workings on this too, so appreciate that.
Yeah, he did.
Trey was instrumental, actually.
And I did it without any air loss, so.
Just great.
Okay, item number two, Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody's favorite subject, fluoride. I'm sure, I'm sure everybody was cringing when they saw this in the council packet, but we're kind of at a point where we need to, you know, make a decision on whether we're going to continue fluoridation in our new water treatment plant. Just to kind of give you a quick update on that, our projected bid dates on this are going to be, we'll probably put it out for advertisement, both projects, April, right after the April council meeting. So this thing's moving fast. We're almost at 90% design. Once we have 90% design, I mean, there's options here. We can obviously put the fluoride system in as is, we can take the fluoride system out, should you decide to take the fluoride system out, you can send it to, you know, you can see the options we've got listed out down below there. The real reason that we want to bring this up is, you know, that's $115,000 capital cost, and then you're in the $23,000, $24,000 a year operations and maintenance, and that covers the chemical costs, the feed pump replacements and so on, because it's pretty corrosive in that kind of quantity. It's not, when you put it out in the system, I'm not here to tell you about the health effects, because I don't really know. With that, you know, from our standpoint, as a staff standpoint, yes, what do staff think? Our opinion is that we're tasked with making the purest water with the least amount of chemicals that we can. Beyond that, should this governing body decide that they want to continue to use fluoride, should the citizens want to use fluoride, we'll do whatever's asked, but from our standpoint, our only criteria is making sure that we create clean, pure water with the least amount of chemicals as possible, and go from there. So with that, you know, we've listed out a couple of options here that council could go with, and that's basically one, you know, direct staff to continue on the route that we are, put the fluoride system in. Second would be to repeal, and this council could repeal the resolution from 2000, and basically take fluoride out. That would obviously, I wouldn't, I would recommend that we have, you know, kind of a public hearing type thing, I think Linda is what we talked about, at least give some comment period for citizens to voice. Yeah. Voice their concerns. Or approve a resolution referring it to the vote of the people. So basically, in a nutshell, we're looking for some direction from council on which way we want to go here, and if it's to continue on, that's the way we'll do it.
You've estimated the cost here, if it's part of the process of developing the plant.
Uh huh.
Now, do you have any idea what additional costs might be experienced if it were added later?
No, I don't. I don't know the answer to that question, because we're not at final design yet. I would have to look and see how the chemical rooms set up. You know, putting it in beforehand is going to obviously be cheaper than having to come back and retrofit something without putting all the lines in when we do it. So if we don't go forth and do it without putting at least some of the infrastructure in, then the capital cost, there'll be more than this. This is the capital cost based on our cost estimates, or actually, our consultant's cost estimates, on what that capital cost would be. That's what they've got attached to the tanks, the pumps, the feed lines, and the SCADA pieces that go with it. So I don't know what that dollar figure would be. It will be more. I don't have a comment, but I just want to let everybody know, we did get a letter addressed to the Lebanon City Council members from the Lynn County Department of Health Services that they wanted to have added to the packet, so I'll just pass that out now.
So, I'll give my little speech on this, or my opinion, and it may not be everyone's opinion, I'm sure it's not, but it's mine. When this, when this came up 19, 20 years ago, Dr. Markello, I believe, was the one who brought this to the most recent council for addition to the system, and the council at that point listened to a lot of debate, I'm sure, they looked at a lot of research, I'm sure, they heard from both sides of the aisle, I'm sure, and the council made the decision that in Lebanon, our water will have supplemental fluoride at a rate that's going to be deemed safe by whatever governing body just deems it to be safe, whatever scientific community deems to be safe. It's my understanding that we're actually under, well under that safe amount at this point.
Correct.
When we designed the water treatment plant, was that designed with the fluoride in it?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's a takeout at this point.
Right. So we decided we're going to go with it in our water system, we've designed a new water system plant to have it, and now, for some reason, it's come up, and I, what I don't want to see is, I don't want to see this become a cost-benefit analysis scenario where, and I know it's not necessarily public health, but it's public dental health, and I don't think that's where we want to go, is saying, well, we can save $140,000 by not doing it at the, at the cost of the next generation's rotted teeth. And people can fight that all they want, but when you speak to people in the dental community and in the medical community, they talk about the benefits that they see with the correlation to fluoride in the water. So my opinion is, we've been behind it all this time. We planned our plant to have it, let's go through with it and keep it. If a citizen group wants to come forward and go through the referendum process to petition to remove it, that's well within their rights, but I feel like our city has chosen this path, and we're on the path, and the path has measurable benefits, I think we stay on the path.
Okay.
I would concur with that. In the absence of more than just anecdotal comments, we don't have a clear mandate from the community to take it out, and I would recommend that we stay the course and let the, let the initiative petition process take its course, if the majority of the citizen wants to do that. I think if we don't provide this mechanism now, the cost to the community to add it on later will be significantly more, and that would be, I think, ill-advised and not fiscally sound judgment for this council.
And I think it's important to point out that the new plant, is what we're talking about here, is the installation of this system for the new plant, that was planned to happen with fluoride. We're not talking about additional money, we're talking about current, call it budgeted, but it's not appropriated yet, but current money that would be spent anyway on that. That money is going to be bond money, correct?
Some of it, yeah.
Some of it? So it's not going to, there won't be an effect on their water rates, that's the question I've heard, is if we don't do it, will we see a reduction in water rates? No, you won't. So again, now you're pitting a cost-benefit, and I just don't want to get into that. So this, we planned for this, we were heading down this road for years, we've been heading down this road the last 20 years. There's been nothing that shows me that we're on the wrong road, other than a handful of studies from one side against a handful of studies from another side, and that's where I stand.
You know, I voted for the addition back in 2000, I think it was 2000. You know, a lot of compelling evidence, even at that time, there was a lot of opposition and with a lot of facts and figures. And since that time, this last go-around is the newest in the entire nation, but there's been a steady trickle of people in over the years to bring in multitudes of derogatory data, and I guess it's always made me a little tired, because I'm not a scientist, I haven't done my own research, and so you go, okay, both sides seem to have incredible backing from people that are quite intelligent in the subject, and it's difficult then to make a judgment. So then, I really would like to hear at some point, I guess, the community's thoughts on this, but I've come to the point also that I think I'm looking at it differently now than I would have at that time, and it's the subject of choice, because kind of what I'm hearing, it almost feels 50/50-ish, so 50% are disgruntled and 50% are ecstatic, and unfortunately, the 50% that are unhappy are being subjected to something they feel is a real violation upon their body and health. Boy, I hate to be in that position, but I think if you look at it from that position, it's a different subject, because I'll never become an authority and do it on that. You know, I don't, I don't even want to get into the hours of debates on whether it's good or bad. And if I recall back when the discussions originally came out, that there's a natural fluoridation of .02 parts per million or whatever, approximately.
Yeah, there's a natural portion of it, yeah, yeah, in water.
So they're going to get that amount, whether there's additional added, and that would probably be not enough to satisfy the people who are in favor, but the people that want a fluoridation can go get a treatment, put it right on their teeth where it was meant, apparently, to do the good and not have it with macaroni and cheese. So I guess I'm kind of looking at it differently, but I would still hesitate to just make an arbitrary decision without a lot of input from the community, but I kind of wish, in a way, we had a little more time to do that. I would almost feel open to removing it and letting a petition add it, because it's the same thing, just from a different angle, because the community had a lot of input, but not in an organized way that, you know, had a head count. Sometimes it's the loudest group that you think was the biggest, but they were just the most vocal. So I don't know where I am on the thing, I just know that I'm not an authority on it, and the more time goes by, it's like, yeah, we thought it was, and now there's all these horrible effects, and, you know, more modern tests have shown, and you just go, man, are we being, are we ignoring new evidence? I don't know, and I can't answer that question. But I do think there is something to allowing, allowing the choice. So I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but.
Wayne and I talked about, we had that discussion at break, and it's fine if you want to have a choice, and you, as an adult, can have that choice. What we're really talking about here are the people that don't have the choice, and those are the children who are most affected by this, who, if their parents don't want to pursue dental checkups, they don't have to, and the child will suffer. If they don't want to pursue the free dental clinics that are available, they don't have to, and the child will suffer. If they don't want to buy the topical fluoride or buy the right toothpaste with the right concentration, the child will suffer, and then it's too late, and now the child's got a set of cavities that numbers his teeth, and here we are, back with the problem. The child doesn't have a choice in this, and so the kid can't call his dentist and say, Mom and Dad don't want to give me fluoride, but I'd like to come down and get a treatment. Doesn't work that way. And that, I think, is where Markello and the proponents of this back in 2000 were coming from.
They were. You know, what I wanted to see was that in 10 years, Markello came and said, here's what we've seen, whether it's a scientific test, but I've seen this real reversal, and then he leaves. And I went to other dentists and said, have you seen a change in 10 years? And I haven't got an answer, so.
Hard to find a dentist that's been, I mean, honestly, right now, the dentists that have been around for 10 years, there's only a couple left in town that, we've seen some new faces, so.
Right, right, so we're left with, I guess, we're left without even a local validation of that original premise, is what I'm saying. And so it comes back to a judgment call if indeed that is truly doing what you're saying, and I agree, there's a lot of, even right here, Lynn County Department of Health Services is saying a pretty strong message, but, you know, some of these people are coming to Harvard, you know, Medical Society or whatever has got, you know, all of this that says it's really bad for you. And I'm just saying, I'm not, I can't dispute that. I would love to see some way that the people of this city could vote or something, and at the end of that, you have 75/25 or, you know, 51/49, but somebody, everyone was heard, and that's the choice I'm talking about, not a choice that I would want to make for them, but, and I say that because it's been so compassionate of the people that have spoke against it. Those people are really of the belief that what they've read is correct, and that we are subjecting them by some kind of process to, you know, they're going to say, it's not even the teeth, it's what it's doing to our insides, because it's corrosive and all those arguments that they're making, so do teeth trump my liver or whatever? That's kind of a.
We're fortunate in this community, though, we have, we have experts, you know, not only do we, I mean, we do have, now that I think about it, you've got Dr. Clark, you've got Dr. Shader, you've got dentists that have been here for quite a while that we could reach out to, and we now have a school full of experts on anatomy and physiology and how things affect the body. Why don't we reach out to Calt Northwest and ask for input from them, as well as the dentists, to address some of these questions that we may or may not have? In the meantime, though, I think we carry on status quo, and if the process, if the, because you're going to have passionate people on either side, no matter what, it doesn't matter what the issue is, the passion, and like you said, the loudest voice is going to be heard last, but this, this council as a body made a decision 16 years ago or 17 years ago, I don't feel it's up to me to arbitrarily say, we'll take it out and then let them bring it in, or I think it's more appropriate for me as a counselor to say, I'm going to let this policy continue to work, because we haven't any problems with it, we haven't had any fluoride poisonings in this community, to my knowledge, and then if there's a significant population of the public that wants to put something on the ballot, there's a process for that, that it's not the city's job at that point, it's the public speaking, that we want to have this brought forward, and they can go through that process, that's the referendum process, correct? So that's kind of, the initiative process, I'm sorry, that's kind of where I would like to see us carry out our own policy, move forward with what we were planning, and if we have to turn the valve off at some point, we turn the valve off, but the cost to put the valve in and turn it on is going to be a lot more than it is to shut the valve off.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not really opposed to that idea either. I just, I think if we do that, number one, I don't want to sit through a whole lot more of this toe-to-toe stuff, because I don't even know how to respond to it.
Reading articles and.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So at some point, either, and I don't want to muzzle anybody either, but obviously, there is a fair amount of people that are very passionate about this, and it seems like one of those things that it would be nice to hear from people, and I, and I'm, I definitely don't want to sound like I want to just remove something, I would not even go there if we didn't have a, have some session like this, that we invited a lot of public and make sure it was really publicized, even then, you're going to get the loud group, and so I'm not even real comfortable with that, so.
Well, here's our session.
I guess maybe we kind of still need to ride the horse, but at some point, I think it would be good for this community, then you could come back to the, if it wins, and you can come back to those people and say, hey, majority rules. You know, if it was 60/40 or even 51/49, that's what the people said.
I agree with what Floyd is saying here, and I think we ought to go to a vote for the, from the people before we make any decision on this. There's one statement, Jason, you came up with, that it's not going to cost the taxpayers anything?
No, it's not going to cost them more than what is already budgeted, it's not an overage item.
Okay, but what, how are you going to pay the $23,000 per year, I guess it is, $230,000 or whatever it was?
23.
Without raising water rates?
They're already paying that amount for, it's already the annual fee.
That's factored into our annual O&M, anyway. I'm just giving you the cost, the overall cost of what this thing, what it is. We're looking at it purely from a perspective of cost and risk management, that's how we're looking at it from.
Okay. Well, I definitely would go for the vote of the people. I've heard an awful lot of people against it.
Let's see, I, well, maybe I misunderstood Floyd's point, but I don't think Floyd was advocating the council push for a vote. I think Floyd, or am I wrong?
I'd like to hear the people, which would be the best way is a vote.
At whose, I mean, was that something you want the council to push?
Yeah, I, as I said a few moments ago, I think that there is a process, the initiative process exists for an opportunity. The initiative process exists for an opportunity to change directions in a community. We have not heard but some small groups' anecdotal kinds of comments from this community. We haven't seen pages after page of petitions unofficial delivered to this council suggesting that there is a hue and cry out there to change the direction. And I agree with Jason. I think we stay the course until we hear that. I believe... I mean, I know Frank personally. I've had Frank's jobs in... Job in the other communities. He would not take the position he has done here out of the blue, you know, in a frivolous manner. He's a credible health professional, and he outlined some very specific points counter to some of the testimony that we've had here. But once again, you know, here's one letter in support of fluoride, and we've heard a couple of people come in to speak against it. That is not a significant voice from the community suggesting a desire to change. I believe we have a mechanism to change public policy, and I think we should let that process move forward.
One of those mechanisms is that the council can also put something on the ballot, too. So, you know, the fact that the people of Lebanon have not spoke on this, the council made that decision in 2000, I believe it was. I agree completely with Floyd as far as the fact that I will never be an expert on this, you know, and I hear both sides, and I'm split down the middle. I just don't know which direction. I'm not as in favor of it because I'm more of the side that feels, "I'd rather not put anything in there if there's a chance of it being dangerous for some people." And I just don't know. We just... There's just no way to tell. But I think that I would like to see the council put up a ballot initiative and let the community decide whether or not that we went forward with fluoride or not. And there's a lot of things that have changed in 15 years. A lot of things medically and research-wise, and people can come up with their own decisions and then let the community decide what they want. Because it does affect a lot of people. It affects babies. It affects, not only in a positive way, but in a negative way, too. So... And again, that's both sides. There's the two different sides, so...
Well, if we put it on... If it was put on the ballot in November, we would hear from the greatest cross-section of our community because of the presidential election, et cetera, than we would on any other given year.
That's true.
And the... You know, a few years ago, we had a change in the charter, and there was some opposition to it. And we sent it back with what we felt were clearer language, and the public reaffirmed what looked apparent to me in the first go-around. So it's... I'm sure not... I don't know. I guess I'd feel more comfortable if I heard a bunch of people on this thing.
And that's the thing. If we put it up for a ballot initiative, then the community can come together and talk about it. They can have forums. It's not necessarily us listening to constant barrages of information because we're not making that decision. It's people trying to convince the community, one way or the other.
We've had two people, we've had two individual citizens come and speak twice recently and then a couple of times before.
Yeah, there's been others.
I find it ridiculous to have the council put something to referendum or to initiative... To a referendum because two people made public comments. I think... And I just will reaffirm that the process is in place. If... And the community is aware of this. They're as aware as they're going to be because it's in the paper, it's on the YouTube. It's the YouTube, I just said that. It's on YouTube. It's on the internet. They're aware of it. If they want to organize and they want to make a change, they have a means to organize and make a change. I don't feel like this is an issue where we need to spoon something to the community because I feel like it gives the impression that we are somehow backing out of our previous and we're saying, "No, no, no, we don't want the blood on our hands. We're just gonna put it to the vote." And I don't believe that. I think what we're doing is right, and I think the policies we have now are right. My kids drink the tap water in town. I love my children, and I want them to be safe and healthy. I feed them as much tap water as I can feed them. I don't give them soda, and I don't give them juice. I give them tap water. My kids don't have cavities either. I don't know if that's empirical evidence or not, but... So if they want to change, there are ways for them to make that change. Organize and make the change. We chose, based on the evidence at the time, to go this direction, and I think we should stick with the course. I don't think it's up to us to say, "We're gonna put it to the vote."
I disagree with that comment about spoon-feeding back to the public because the decision was made without public. I mean, there was input, but the council made that decision. So there has never been a decision being able to be made by the public, and I think the public deserves that opportunity.
Well, my years...
Public has the opportunity.
And I supported it in the year 2000. And I... It's my opinion we stay the course. There is a referendum initiative process that the citizens can take if they want to make a change. If I recall correctly, back in '99, 2000, when this was on the table, we could not get our local medical and dental people because it was a political issue, and we won't get them to do that now either, make a comment for or against. We have it in the system. It's in the engineering design stage. I say we leave it there because it will cost considerably more should the citizens want it back in later if we did away with that now. And I think we just let it play out and stay the course.
Okay, let's do a...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to just give you a little bit of history, and that is... I don't remember the dates, but in my research, I know it was maybe... I want to say '86, but don't quote me on that. And in the '50s, it did go to the vote of the people, and they did vote it down, just letting you know that.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I think we've had enough discussion, unless there's anything else important anybody wants to say. Let's at least get a consensus. So Wayne, your opinion on the matter?
My opinion, we stay the course as it is.
Do what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would choose option number one of the presentation from Ron.
Okay. Bob?
I'd go for the vote of the people.
Okay. And Robert?
I stay the course, option one.
And Floyd?
Well, I would kind of lean to the number three.
Okay. Looks like it's three to two, even though it's not a vote, it's a consensus. So it looks like the consensus is to stay the course at this point.
Okay. Well, my point of this was not to put you guys in a significant position, but we do need to have the discussion. And people do... We get asked that question a lot, you guys may or may not, but we get asked the question. I mean, people ask us. We're not experts on it either. I mean, we're going off the EPA guidelines, and, you know, we just want to make sure that before we spend the money and put the money out there from our standpoint and manage the risks of having it in our system and making sure that all the dosages are correct, that this body is on board with that. So it's designed in and ready to go, so that's the course we'll go with. Okay? Thank you.
And just to clarify Bob's questions from earlier, the costs are not gonna go up as a result of this consensus decision?
No, 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 no. This is...
Costs are built in? The rates... The water rates are not going to be increased as a result of staying this course? No additional capital costs are being added to the system or to the ratepayers?
No, we'd actually be pulling it off the design, is what we'd be doing. I just thought it was an appropriate time to talk about it before we spent the money on it and two months later decided that we didn't want to use it.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you hang out for just a second? Under council items. Items from council, I had a quick question for you. Had a citizen ask me, and I've had people ask me this probably over the last year pretty intensely, about a signal or some kind of control around Reeves and Highway 20. Is there any possibility to that, or is there any discussion on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's in the economic development agreement that we have with Samaritan for the campus up there. It's also in the TSP, I believe. Of course, we're doing a TSP update right now. So basically, what's gonna trigger that signal, either there or Mullins, is at some point, I think, and Walt and I have talked about this, under one of the next planned developments that they have up there, we'll actually do... Make them do another traffic impact analysis. At some point, that it will... We were kind of holding off with Aspire's development and everything with his traffic and trying to tie all this together to make sure that the signal gets put in the right spot. So at some point, yeah, there will be a signal up there.
Yeah, it's just a lot of people growing concerns. I know I see it if I come out of the hospital area, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon. It's really hard to get across.
Yes, it is, very much so. And it's time, and we know that it is time for another one, and we'll probably get some pretty good count data from ODOT. I know their TSP is kicking off, and in fact, they had a meeting on it yesterday, so...
Okay. Very good, thank you.
You bet.
Any other items from council?
I had a couple of follow-ups. At the last meeting, Councilor Reese Camp brought up the issue of some homeless folks at the Park Street Bridge. I had discussion with Jason, and he filled me in. He's filled me in in the past, but it's an issue that his crews are dealing with all the time. They're always cleaning up the litter. He's even told me they've managed to encourage these folks to leave at times. I think five or six, seven times over the last year, they always come back. So our discussion ended, this would have been almost two weeks ago, with Jason and Chief Frank agreeing that they were gonna go over and look at the situation and see if they could develop other approaches or ideas to address it. Of course, we're somewhat handcuffed in our ability to deal with this with what courts have done over time with the homeless issue. But I wanted you to know, Councilor Reese Camp, that we are having serious discussions and trying to do something with this, but it's not an easy nut to crack. So that's... I don't know. You had any feedback on that?
Same folks or different folks?
I think it's the same folks. Jason, did you want to have anything to say or...
They kind of rotate through different groups. Yeah, the faces aren't always the same, but it's original, and then they have a friend come in and they leave. My concern is when there is garbage extensively for days. Basically, it isn't proven a good job of cleaning up after all of it. This is not the only site they have to worry about.
Right.
With high visibility, and as I told you, we had a homeowner that was looking to buy here for balance and wondered why we had to lay around for a number of days.
And if I could just add for a second. Councilor Boland texted me a picture the other day from Eugene. Remember that? And it was basically, he says, "Why can they do this in Eugene?" And it was a prohibition from people camping under a bridge in Eugene. And the reason is, is because Eugene has... Is kind of at the forefront of this in Oregon and following some Ninth Circuit case law in that they have created homeless camps. So that since they have a place for the homeless to sleep, they can thereby limit their sleeping to that location. So, I mean, if the council, and I'm not encouraging this, I'm not saying this is what they need to do, but to truly make a dent in this and to create a situation where we can say, "You can't sleep in these certain locations," you would have to consider the potential for homeless camps, places where you allow them to camp and sleep. That's kind of where the law is going on this. You just can't tell them you can't sleep in city property.
I recommend it more.
I know.
So I had one more follow-up. We had a gentleman here who has a business on Airway at the last meeting who was concerned about darkness on the street. Ron worked with him, and there's a plan in place now where I think it's gonna be five?
Maybe even more, more streetlights.
Several streetlights are coming to Airway because of that, and I just wanted to follow-up and make you aware of that.
Good.
Excellent. Thank you, Gary. Anything else from council? Public comments is another opportunity for anybody from the public who would like to Items from press? Where are you, John?